Welcome everyone to the October 3, 2022, meeting of the Carver School Committee. If everyone could please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Mr. Neef is going to start with a recognition.
So just a reminder, this meeting is also being held virtually in accordance with the governor of Massachusetts' March 12, 2020 order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Members of the public can access this meeting online on Zoom, on Area 58 Live, or in Town Hall in Meeting Room 1. So that being said, we're very excited tonight to start with a recognition of Shayna Strusky. Shayna, if you could come on up, that would be great, and take a seat for a while. Take a seat for a second. No, no, at the table.
It's like, I don't know where to go. You're fine.
So Shayna has been recognized as a commended student as part of the National Merit Scholar Program. Students are selected as commended students or semifinalists or national merit scholars based on their score on their PSAT exam. Last year, over 1.5 million students took the PSAT, and the commended students have a score of the top 50,000 in the nation. But if you do the math of that, the top 50,000 is actually in the top 3%. So Shayna's scores were in the top 3% of all students in the United States of America. So that itself is outstanding. But I wanted, so we're going to give Shayna a recognition. Shayna, you don't necessarily have to say anything, so we can, if you'd like to. But, you know, obviously, it's outstanding honor to have your scores be in the top 3%. Then, of the top 3%, the top 1% actually go on and are named semifinalists in the National Merit Scholar Program. Then, the top 1% have to actually complete an application process, and then they select 8,000 students nationwide as national merit scholars. So it's really like the top half of 1% will actually become national merit scholars. Unfortunately, Shayna, you weren't there, but I wanted to point something out, which is, I just wanted people to be aware, your score actually was in the 99th percentile. So you were in the top 1% of all scores across the nation. Now, this sounds off, but I'll explain why you didn't move on as a semifinalist, is it's actually, it's very difficult in the state of Massachusetts to become a semifinalist. If people don't know this, Massachusetts always has the highest SAT scores in the country, and Massachusetts always has the highest PSATs in the scores in the country. And this was true again this year. And for the National Merit Scholar Program, they want to have regional balance, so they make sure they select representatives from all 50 states. So even though your score was in the top 1%, so I wanted to make that recognition, you were in the 99th percentile, in Massachusetts, it didn't make the qualification to move on to the next round, but was still just an outstanding accomplishment. The other thing you should at least be aware of is, there are some, for those students who are commended students, occasionally, there's other opportunities for them. So you may actually get contacted from the National Merit Scholar Program, not guaranteeing this is going to happen, but you may get contacted from the National Merit Scholar Program for maybe some other scholarship opportunities as you're looking to look at schools for next year. In terms of your actual score report, I wanted to point out that there's three sections of the exam. There's a reading section, there's a writing and language section, and there's a math section. And you actually had a perfect score in the writing and language section, got every single question right. So that's just outstanding. It's a tremendous accomplishment. And so we just want to recognize you and thank you for, really, your dedication to your own education and for the success. So this happens every now and then in Carver, so we occasionally have commended students. In my years as principal, I occasionally had commended students, but it's not something that necessarily happens every single year. And I just think it's amazing that your scores were in the top 1% of all students in the country. So I would, us, I would like to recognize you, the committee would like to recognize you for being named as a commended student in the National Merit Scholar Program, and we have our, the recognition from, this is their recognition comes from them. Congratulations. Do you want to go right up? Everybody can say congratulations. So, go ahead, if you want to go right up, everybody can say congratulations.
I'm going to take one more. Excellent.
Thanks, everybody. And I don't know if any members of the committee would like to add their thank yous or recognitions or congratulations?
It's just extremely impressive, so congratulations. You should be very proud of yourself.
And we're sorry for putting him on the spot. But congratulations, amazing work.
Super, super impressive.
Thank you for coming today.
Congratulations, Shayna, thank you so much for sharing this with us, it's really special. So congratulations to you. Look forward to hearing about what your plans are for next year, so you'll have to keep us posted. Thank you for coming again.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Okay, so that brings us to comments from the EAPC, and I think I saw Tom Pinto.
I don't know if Mr. and Mrs. Strusky want to.
Oh, do you want to, absolutely, do you want to come up and say something? You're more than welcome to.
You are welcome to go head home. Absolutely, thank you. Thank you for coming.
So amazing. Truly, truly so amazing, so glad they were able to join us this evening to celebrate. Okay, so now that brings us to comments from the EAPC, and I see that Tom Pinto is with us, there's Tom, hi, Tom.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, well, that's a tough act to follow. So just wanted to say good evening, everyone. Here we are already in October, I can't believe it, you know, there's some rainy weather. I hope everyone had a great start to the school year. On another note, if anyone has any family members in Florida, I hope they're safe and okay. They experienced a truly scary storm, so just wanted to give them my best. Also, on a positive note, we have a nice long weekend coming up, so I encourage everyone in the school community to take a chance to relax and take some time for themselves and their families. That's it tonight, thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, so that brings us to comments from the general public. Like you see that we have one member on Zoom, so if you are watching on Zoom and if you would like to make a comment, you are welcome to, just please put your name in the chat so you can be recognized. If there's anyone here in their room that has anything they would like to say, the microphone is yours, just come right up to the table and you can speak.
Or are we now the mic that could be brought to you if you are unable to move to the microphone? Just raise your hand.
That is very true, that is new this evening, so it is a great option.
And I see no movement in the chat.
I do not see anything in the chat, and I do not see any movement towards the microphone. So that will bring us to something new, which is great, well, not fairly new, we started last year, right? Haven't had you guys here in a while, but very excited to welcome our student ambassadors, Luna Wiggins and Chase Cutting, so welcome, look forward to hearing all of the great things you have to share with us.
Hi, I'm Luna Wiggins.
And I'm Chase Cutting. We are student ambassadors from CES, and we want to share some of the great activities happening at our school. Take it away, Luna.
Our school theme is, above all, be kind. All throughout the year, we have been doing activities to encourage other students to make others feel better, and celebrating kids who are doing the right thing, even when no one is looking.
Before school started, we hosted a playdate for incoming kindergarten students. The kids got to meet new friends, play on the playground, and enjoy popsicles. I was able to help at the event. The kids looked like they were having so much fun. Meet the Teacher Night looked a little different this year.
How so?
Kids got to pop in and eat some popcorn while meeting their teacher.
Getting to know you activities were done so that students could get to know each other better.
Did you meet any new friends this year, Luna?
Yes, I did.
Why is there a big, long divot around the fields?
That's the new running path.
Mrs. Nicole's class made a thank you card for everyone working on it. Here it is on an excavator.
You know how teachers run on Duncan?
Yeah.
CES kids run on our new running path.
There are two new bookrooms at CES for teachers to borrow books from their lessons.
How many books are there? 500, 1,000?
Nope, over 7,000 books and growing.
Whoa, the kids at the school have a lot of reading to do. CES kids also brought in money to put in the golden boot that was in the office to support Go Gold for Hope. Kids and staff also wore gold. The musicians from Goulet explained the instrument families and inspired students in grades four and five to sign up for a band. I was in band last year. We played a lot of songs, including the well-known Jurassic Park.
I want to play trumpet.
I played the clarinet. Before and after school programs are awesome. Chorus, video club, learn to ride.
Don't forget about Running Club, that also starts this week.
You're right, Running Club begins this week, and Coyote Kid Club starts next week.
There are a lot of opportunities for kids before and after school. We are rolling out of the road to success. Bus drivers will rate each bus ride with a score of 2 if the rules are followed all the time, 1 if the rules are followed some of the time, and 0 if the rules are not followed at all.
The Road to Success Bulletin Board will track buses' progress so students can see who is in the lead.
There will be a mystery prize monthly for the bus to reach the road to success.
The Booster-thon kickoff is tomorrow. The theme is adventure awaits.
Running the Booster-thon is so fun, and it's great that the money is to help our school.
I can't wait.
Have a great evening, and remember, above all, be kind.
Did a great job, thank you very much, we appreciate your presentation this evening.
Yes, Luna and Chase, that was extremely entertaining and informing, thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for coming. We always love to have student ambassadors come share all the great things that are happening at CES with us, so you both did a tremendous job, thank you very much.
Thank you, great job.
Thanks, sis.
They are so awesome. Good night, everyone, thank you for coming. Okay, so that brings us to approval of minutes for the September 12, 2022 open session.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the September 12, 22 open session minutes.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Are there any communications this evening?
There are no communications this evening.
Okay, so that brings us to the report from the superintendent.
So we'd like to start this evening with the induction of our Student Advisory Council. So obviously, we're excited, this is a new program that the Carver Public Schools is looking to begin, where we're going to have a group of five students who are going to meet with two members of the school committee on a regular basis. Ms. Brown, do you want to come up? I was going to have them all come up, but if you want to have everybody come up now, show me Ken, I was going to introduce everybody, so come on up, grab a chair. Yeah, so we're excited about this opportunity, so one student's unable to make it tonight because they had a soccer game, but we're going to introduce our five students, and these five students will meet with two members of the school committee on a regular basis, and then one or two of them will be selected to actually be with us for every meeting. And our goal is that for our next meeting on October 24th, we haven't selected which student it's going to be yet, but one student will be here with us for that meeting and will attend all of our regular meetings. And ultimately, this is a great opportunity for students to begin to have a voice and choice and things that are happening within the schools, and they're going to be outstanding representatives of the school community. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about how they were selected, and then as part of their selection process, they each had a write, like almost a statement of interest and application, and I'm just going to read one thing from each of their applications as I introduce them to tell you about how and why they wanted to be part of this. So Mrs. Cabral reached out to the school committee at the beginning of the year and said, and she put it out to all students, this was put out to the entire school, grades eight through 12, saying, is this something you'd be interested in doing? We're looking to establish a student advisory council. And she gave a general overview of how it would work, and you'd be meeting with members of the school committee, and we were very excited that we had 14 students actually come forward and say they had an interest in this. So then, which we thought was great, 14 students across a wide spectrum of grades. So then, Mrs. Cabral and I met with the 14 students, talked about the concept of having like a building-based student advisory council, and then talked about this council and saying, ultimately, we're looking to have five students to be part of this group, and we asked the 14, you know, if you're interested in being one of the five who's part of the student advisory committee that would report to the school committee or work with the school committee, we asked them to go through an application process. Then a group of administrators and teachers screened their applications and selected the five students. And then we'll be going down to the next process of selecting the one or two students who will be here with us for the meetings. And then Mrs. Cabral is going to keep the whole group together, 14 students, and she's going to meet with them on a monthly basis as a school-based advisory council, and their first meeting's coming up sometime in the next, October 14th, sometime in the next couple weeks. So I'd like to introduce everybody, and like I said, I'll just read one thing from their application. So first, we have Luke Flammer, Luke is a senior at Carver Middle High School. And Luke said, joining the student advisory committee sounded like an opportunity to have fun and help with the future of the Carver Public Schools. He also said, mindset is very important to any task, and I've learned that having a growth mindset is very important. So, welcome, Luke, we're happy that you're here. Sarah Stares, Sarah's actually not here, she's unable to make it tonight, but I'll still read what, from her, from her, her application. I want the students at our school to be able to have a voice in the community. As a student here, I feel like sometimes our voice is limited. I want to be able to give voice to the concerns and suggestions that our students have for the school, which I thought was a great statement. Lilly Mercer, Lilly's here, we're happy she's here with us. Lilly is a sophomore at the middle high school, plays field hockey, saw her games there, I know you play a couple, play, what else do you play, Lilly? Softball. So Lilly said, I think it would be really great for me and other students at the school to be able to have a say in what changes we could make, and I'm going to hear from the body as a whole to make suggestions to the group to make changes at Carver Middle High School. Ashton McGuire, Ashton is a freshman, and Ashton said, as part of his, as part of the application, I want to make sure that school is safe and supportive for everyone. I want to make a difference, I want to be the change that the school needs. So that's a tremendous statement for the school as a whole. And finally, Megan Daly, Megan Daly is a freshman at the middle high school, and Megan said, Mahatma Gandhi once said, you must be the change you wish to see in the world, and this is my chance to be that change that I want to see. So we're just really excited that this group of students wanted to come forward, wanted to represent themselves, but also represent the school as a whole, and I'm excited about this opportunity for us as a school district, for the middle high school, and for the school committee. Ms. Brown, if you want to add anything, or any of the students, if you want to add anything?
I think you captured very well, I'm just really proud of them for wanting to be part of this, excited to working with them, I'm excited to work with the 14, I think 14 wanting to be involved and have a voice is impressive, and we'll look forward to working together.
Excellent, that is great, do any of you have anything that you want to say? Not to put you on the spot, thank you all very much for coming. I know, but it's so great that you could be here too, so I'm so excited that 14 kids signed up, that's just phenomenal, the first really, you know, push to get this up and running, so thank you to all of you, I look forward to hearing all of your voices.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll work on scheduling the first meeting, hopefully sometime, sometime before October 24th, and selecting who will be the student representative who will be attending the meetings on a regular basis. So we look forward to that work, thanks, thanks, everybody.
If I may say something real quick?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
I just want to say, Mrs. Cabral, thank you so much for meeting with the 14, because, you know, it's hard when you have a committee and you have to have a selection process, but you never want to, you never want to discard people from wanting to volunteer. So thank you for taking the time to continue to meet with that 14, because it's exciting that we have that many students that want to participate. Ultimately, what we do here affects your education, and when Steph brought this to us last year, that we should have this council, her and I really jumped right on board with getting it up and running for the start of this year, because we want to hear your voices, we want to hear your thoughts, we care about your opinions, because this is your education, and we want Carver to have the best education it can and the best experience for its students. And who else better to guide that than the students themselves, right? So your voices do matter, we want you to know that. Thank you guys for volunteering, it sometimes is nerve-wracking, but I'm proud of you, especially Ashton. Those of you who don't know, Ashton's my nephew. So, sorry, proud Auntie moment, but yeah, thank you, and we look forward to meeting Sarah. And Scott, does it have to be the same representative, like, for the whole year, or can they rotate? Has that been discussed? I'm just curious.
Ultimately, we can make the choice we want to make. What we talked about was that it would be two people who'd be selected who would have the opportunity to rotate. The guidelines technically call that they're supposed to select one or, they're supposed to select two people as like the chair and the vice chair of the group, and that those would be the two people who would work and look at their schedules and say, let's see if we can make these meetings. I defer to the will of the committee, if you wanted to leave it open, then all five of them could create a schedule to come. Honestly, I don't, this is a little bit new for us, so I don't know if it's, if it would make sense to have a consistent person or not, so that's something we can think about. So I leave that to you and maybe to the subcommittee to make that decision, and all of them as part of applying for this piece, had a commit that they'd be willing to come to the meetings, and they all did that, so they all did that through the application, said, yes, I'm interested and I'd be willing to come to the meetings on a regular basis. So we can talk with, we can have that discussion either now, or the subcommittee make the decision if it's just going to be one or two people, or if we open it up to all five and do some sort of rotation. I don't know if people have thoughts about that right now.
Anyone?
I almost feel like, I mean, that's going to be Colleen and I, and I feel like that might be something we want to discuss amongst us before we make a decision on it with, with the student advisors.
And I mean, a great indicator of things to come is that we have some younger grade representation, so ultimately, hopefully, this will continue to grow and be a great program to be involved in, you know, if a younger student isn't chosen to be the actual designee this year, this future years, for that opportunity.
Absolutely.
I'm open to leaving it to the subcommittee to have a conversation with the students and make that decision on what representation's going to look like at the meetings, if the committee as a whole is okay with that.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, typically, most other districts have one rep, but that doesn't mean that we have to do what everyone else does. I think this is an opportunity for us to do what's best for our district, so I think we all respect that, so, so again, so thank you.
I'm happy for them to make the decision, I would say, as long as we're not in violation of rules, I would like the fluidity that, like, if there was a particular student that, you know, had something, you know, they wanted to address at a specific meeting, you know, they don't get to vote, but they get to participate in discussion, it'd be nice to have that fluidity of, you know, different, and I think it's just a cool experience for them, but you guys can all come to the meetings anyway and sit in the audience every time, you're always invited to come to our meetings.
I did say, there's no expectation that you stay tonight beyond your introduction to the committee.
Yes, Sarah, Carrie, you can't leave till 11.
Tonight may not be a bad night to stay, it's a pretty short agenda.
No, perfect, yeah, you guys, you guys will make a good decision, make the decision of what's best for the council, and I'm just excited that there's going to be student representation.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, thank you for being here this evening. Congratulations.
All right, so that brings us to personnel updates.
Personnel updates, so we have, we haven't had a lot of movement since our last meeting, we've had a little bit. So Peter O'Shaer is ESP Special Ed at the middle high school, was a new hire, Raven Jones is ESP Special Education at the middle high school, Lynn Dolan is a CDL floaters bus driver, and we've had a couple resignations, Sherri Howes is an ESP lunch monitor at the elementary school, and Megan Costa is a special education teacher at the middle high school. So that's our personnel changes and updates since the last time we met.
That brings us to a very, very exciting topic, Carver Care slash Drug-Free Communities Grant, excellent news.
Catherine, if you want to come up?
So nice to see you again.
Yeah, so, you know, so we're just excited about our partnership with Carver Cares in terms of applying for this grant, and I'm just going to kind of give an overview of the grant, anything you want to add it or change or modify, or really just wanted to thank you for being here tonight and taking the time, and for all the work that you've done with Carver Cares and helping us apply for this grant. So the exciting part is, Carver's been awarded a Drug-Free Communities Grant in the amount of $125,000 for each of the next five years. So I'll give you a little background on the grant. The Drug-Free Communities Support Program is the nation's leading effort to mobilize communities to prevent and reduce substance abuse and use among youth. It was created in 1997 by the Drug-Free Communities Act, it's administered by the White House and managed by the CDC. The Drug-Free Community Program provides grants to community coalitions, like ours, our coalition, and public school districts, to strengthen the infrastructure among local partners to create and sustain a reduction in local youth substance abuse. The goals of the grant, to establish and strengthen collaboration amongst communities, public and private nonprofit agencies, and federal, state, and local and tribunal governments to support the efforts of community coalitions working to prevent and reduce substance abuse and use among its youth. Also reduce substance use among youth over time, reduce substance abuse among adults by addressing the factors in the community that increase risk for substance abuse, and promoting factors that minimize risk of substance abuse for young people. You know, so obviously, we applied for this grant in collaboration with Carver Cares. Carver Cares has been really a strong local, you know, community effort, community-based drug awareness effort that began in, since I was part of the beginning, I'm looking, I'm looking at you, like, yeah, it was 2013, so we began, so we're almost on to 10 years for Carver Cares' existence, so it shows that it has legs, it's able to sustain, and you're really High Point Treatment Center, Carver Cares, and the Carver Public Schools collaborated together to apply for this grant, and the biggest thing it's going to allow us to do is going to allow us to actually hire a community coordinator and have that person take over the leadership of running and supporting these activities, both at the school level and the community level. And you have some experience in terms of working with these partnerships in other communities, do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Absolutely, so, yeah, Scott mentioned Superintendent Neef, definitely no short tasks to apply for a federal grant, but we did it and are so grateful to be, that Carver Cares awarded, is awarded for this grant. As he mentioned, we are going to be hiring a full-time community coordinator, so stay tuned for that. It's a really exciting role where you get to interface with communities, partners, organizations, and my role working with Carver Cares through High Point Treatment Center, we have Um, we have a regional approach, um, through the Plymouth Area Prevention Collaborative. So I've worked in Carver, Middleborough, Plymouth, and of the last year and a half, Wareham. So, um, I've had experience doing this in, um, local towns nearby and, um, Plymouth is a town that had, just finished their ten years of Drug Free Communities funding. And you could really see a huge shift in, in terms of getting like more, um, folks on board locally. Um, you know, more, I mean, Carver does an excellent job with having their volunteers very heavily engaged. And having that full-time coordinator really just opens up more opportunities and doors to really make a difference and prevent substance use in Carver. So I'm really excited about that. And I think, I think you said everything else, um, just be on the lookout for that job posting because we are hiring.
Yes, and.
The time that we expect that to be.
Well, we actually just, I, I didn't tell you this, I should have emailed you today. Uh, so we actually received, uh, the first steps of the grant process for actually for us to start receiving the funds. And my assumption was that is because, uh, the federal government's budget cycle is October first to September thirtieth. That's their fiscal year. Uh, so there was a little bit of question of, well, we haven't really heard, we were notified, we received the grant, but we haven't heard anything else since then. So we were, we were a little concerned about that. Uh, I actually got a call from Bill Keating himself, who's the representative for this area. Uh, and one of the, one of the members of our coalition is Michael Jackman, who is his, uh, representative in this area. So like he's his, uh, public communications coordinator. He like runs his local office and Michael's part of our group and a very active member of our group. And so Bill Keating called me personally and said, hey, I just wanted to let you know, Carver got the grant. We're excited about it. I think High Point got a communication that we received the grant. But we, the Carver Public Schools, never actually got anything in writing saying we received the grant. Uh, so we actually asked about that last week and they sent us a, a notification, uh, that saying, yes, you did receive the grant. That is true. Here's something in writing. Uh, and then today we've received some information about actually, uh, getting the funds, uh, moving into the Carver Public Schools so we can begin the process. So I actually think we'll post the position this week. And then move forward on the hiring process. And then once we do that, I'll invite that person to come here, uh, to the meeting and introduce them to the, to the committee and to the community. And transition them to start doing some of that work with Carver Cares and at the building level. Uh, and so I think it's just a great opportunity that we're excited about. And after five years, you can apply for an additional five years. Uh, so many of the communities who have this actually go through a ten-year span. Plymouth just finished their tenth year. Uh, they had, they had a drug-free communities coordinator, they had a grant. Uh, so you know, at the end of the five years, we'll be looking to do an additional five years, hopefully, and, and have this in place for ten years. And then the concept is like with any grant, is that once the position's been in the district for ten years, that there might be support for continuity of maintaining that position, even when the grant funds go away. Uh, but that is not, that's not a requirement of the grant. But obviously, one of the goals of maintaining the grant for ten years, or if you get it for ten years, is that the position becomes so ingrained in this valuable work, uh, that the school community at that time, uh, ten years from now would see a value in maintaining that position.
So this coordinator is an employee of Carver?
Yeah, so all, all the money, all, all hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars comes to the Carver Public Schools with the fiduciary of the grant. Uh, and this would be a Carver Public Schools employee. Uh, any other questions?
Excellent. Do you have the logistics figured out of where this person's going? Will they have an office, central office? Will they be in buildings?
Most likely, I think, would be at central office as a office. But then would be, you know, obviously working in both buildings and the community as a whole. Cause really the goal is to be a community liaison.
Very exciting. Thank you so much for all of your efforts in helping, um, apply.
And then you have some exciting news. You're transitioning out of your role a little bit. So I don't know if you want to talk about that a little bit.
Yes.
That's exciting for you, but sad for the coalition.
Yeah, so I've been working with the Plymouth Area Prevention Collaborative and Carver Cares being one of the coalitions in my region for the last few years now. Um, and I'm actually transitioning out. I'm staying on per diem until we got someone, um, in my full-time role for the regional level, which would co-coordinate with this new person coming in. Um, so it won't be just kind of one person trying to figure it out. We'll be, we'll have some continuity from High Point Treatment Center of getting that person set up with connections in the community and relationships we've established. But, um, yeah, I'm moving on to, I started a new role, um, next door in Middleborough Public Schools. Um, they got a grant to have a staff wellness liaison to support staff and their families, um, seeing a need, you know, posts still kind of in pandemic land. So, um, I'm doing a lot of mental health work there. So it's really exciting.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you for all you've done, uh, for our community and your role here.
Thank you. It's been, it's been awesome working with you guys. You guys have a great community setup and everyone's so welcoming. I think whoever comes in is, is gonna feel welcomed. So it's going to be a great, a great job for whoever comes in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So excited about Drug Free Communities Grant. Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you very much. Absolutely. Thanks, everybody.
All right. So I think that brings us to review of the NEAS report. So welcome, Christine Cabral, Lieutenant Principal of Carver Middle High School again. Uh, Christine's going to give an overview of the NEAS process, uh, the collaborative conference we had last year, and then the report that was developed by the visiting committee. So welcome again, Christine.
Great. Yes, welcome.
Thank you. So as Scott just said, I'm going to, so we had the NEAS visit and this, we have the report. I'm going to give a summary of the report and, um, go over some of their recommendations. But I'm going to start from like square one and, um, explain the, the whole process and explain where we are in the process. So the reporting, um, for an assessment, it, there's a five steps to it. So the first step is the self-reflection process, which we've collected surveys from students and teachers and staff. Um, and we've done our own reporting on where our school stands. We shared that with the NEAS committee. So that was the first step. The second step was the collaborative conference visit, which occurred last May, where we had five NEAS representatives come and spend two days with us. They reviewed all of the survey data that I just explained. And they spent two days like living in our building and interviewing and just like living our, our day with us. So we completed steps one and two. Right now, we're in step three, which is the school's development and implementation of the growth and improvement plan. So now we have their report. We need to review it, take that information and decide what steps we're going to take, uh, moving forward for improvement. And we have two years to go through that process, where we'll have the decennial, um, accreditation visit. And then the follow-up program is like the ten years between our accreditation, um, period. So what they're looking for, the five standards for the accreditation. They include learning culture, student learning, professional practices, learning support, and learning resources. So in those five areas, we were, um, assessed as whether we met these standards or if we did not meet these standards. So I'll start with learning culture. Learning culture, the report, the narrative included a lot, um, like pages of information. And I'll just hit some of the highlights as to where we met the standards as far as learning culture. Um, we have a safe learning environment. We have supportive staff as in far, as far as school adjustment counselors and guidance counselors. We have appropriate safety protocols in place. Um, we have a secure building with our door system and, and, and visitors coming and going from the building. We have a very close relationship with law enforcement, fire, and police. Uh, we have an inclusive culture with the DEI District Committee, um, Unified Sports, Special Olympics, GSA. Um, and throughout the report, they commended us for our work with the pathways and project-based learning and PBL and the professional development we've dedicated in both of those areas. So those were some of our strengths in learning culture. However, they stated that we did not meet the standard. And the reason we didn't meet the standard is because we have yet to develop a vision of the graduate. But as I go on in the presentation, uh, we're, we're on our way to creating a vision of the graduate and we have a plan. Um, so I'll address that in a, in a minute.
Do you mind if I just hop in there for a second?
No, please do.
You can take this as well if you want. In terms of, the community might have a question of what, what is a vision of the graduate? And why, why is it like a driving piece of the process?
You can do it.
Okay.
I mean, I worked on it with the staff last week, but go ahead. You want?
Yeah, so ultimately, you know, the, the, the concept of the vision of the graduate is for the school community to come together. And obviously what it says, to say, these are the core skills that a student who graduates from this school we believe needs. And but the, when they want to establish that, the vision of the graduate is supposed to be the driver of decisions. So it's supposed to be embedded in all the curriculum documents. It's supposed to set, it's supposed to set the vision in essence of, this is where we want students to be able to go. And everything we do is supportive of that concept of the vision of the graduate. So in terms of learning culture, the, the learning culture is suppo, is supposed to support the vision of the graduate. But if we don't have that formalized statement yet, obviously, we're not going to be able to ha, meet the standard. So it's really the, the, the one deficiency there was establishing the statement. It's very similar to the old, the old NEAS system was, I don't even know how many of you would remember this, the statement of core values and beliefs. Uh, so the core values and beliefs in the old NEAS process became the vision of the graduate and the new updated standards and regulations.
So at our last meeting, we reviewed the educational blueprint and in that we had sort of like a vision statement. But so would that not, this is something that's separate from that or like, it, does it get derived from it? They should somehow be connected, right?
They should certainly be related, absolutely. And, but it is still considered separate.
Okay.
So the vi, the vision of the graduate is supposed to be, in theory, NEAS, their visit is really only looking at, NEAS does evaluate middle schools, primarily they evaluate high schools. Uh, so this vision of the graduate, really, if you think about it, it should be a district-wide statement. It should be a statement that you want to start in kindergarten and build towards. Conceptually, it's really though, some school districts only have the vision of the graduate for their high schools. So it is supposed to be very specific to the high school in terms of what do you want that graduating senior to look like? And it's supposed to just, to drive all decisions in that building. It certainly should be ra, related to the vision statement in the educational blueprint. And then once the building establishes the vision of the graduate, we might have to go back and look at the educational blueprint and make sure that that aligns. Sorry.
That's okay. When we worked on, we did work on the vision of the graduate last week and a half day. And we pulled out the vision statement from, because we're using the language from our vision statement in determining our language for vision of the graduate. So it is, does all kind of intertwine.
Awesome.
So the second standard is the student learning. And similar to what Scott just explained, you know, we have curriculum documents, they're consistent in their format. Um, almost all content areas are similar in design. We use the Framework Understanding by Design Handbook. They, again, it commended us for the pathways and the PBL work envisioned. We have Rubrics, we have Aspen, um, they commend us for our technology use. But again, for the student learning, they said that we did not meet that standard for exactly what Scott just explained. While we have the curriculum and we have the curriculum documents, there's some work to be done in making sure all content areas are using the similar format. But because we don't have the vision of the graduate to embed into our curriculum documents, that's something that we need to work toward over the next two years. Um, and as I go further on the presentation, I'll explain what our timeline is for our vision of the graduate. And then we'll use time to take that vision and incorporate it into our curriculum. And then in standard three, the professional practices. We, the, we did meet the standards as far as professional practices. We do have our school improvement plan and our educational blueprint in place. Um, there's ongoing reflection, teacher collaboration, and professional development. And there's time in particularly in our new schedule that, um, provides for that. Um, our department meetings, we have our departments meet after school monthly. And in addition to that, the department chairs meet with administration once per cycle, um, where we have one-hour meetings. Um, and in addition to that, we have monthly meetings after school as our curriculum team leaders to spend additional professional development time, administration, and department chairs working together. Um, they mentioned the, the district-wide mentor program, um, as supportive of our new staff. The new schedule that allows for additional collaboration time for all teachers. Um, and the wind block, um, it kind of works in conjunction with that. And once again, all of the strand work, as we have ongoing professional development over the course of the year, which focuses in various strands such as the PBL, um, the UDL, SEL, and pathways work.
Awesome. Excellent.
In standard number four, um, again, we meet the standard in learning and support, that we have appropriate supports in place for our students in the building. Uh, we have a clear guidance referral process for all teachers, staff, parents to refer students to guidance for social emotional support and other needs. We have the special education referral process if a student needs to be evaluated. The middle, middle and high school student assist teams. So every other week, we have a team of administration, guidance, school adjustment counselor, school nurse. And occasionally, special education teachers will join us. Occasionally, our school resource officer will join us. But we come together every two weeks to talk about students who are struggling. Um, we determine like what we can put in place to support those students and we track that. And so every two weeks, we monitor those students' progress. We might reach out to families and offer out-of-school supports as well as in-school supports. Uh, so it's just an effort of, for this team to keep an eye on students and do what we can to help them. Uh, we have appropriate staffing, health services, adjustment counselors, special education. Um, we have appropriate library and information resources available to our students and staffing for that. Um, and we have appropriate staffing and services in place for our ELL students. Um, and then the final standard was learning resources and we also met the standard for that. As I mentioned earlier, we have, we provide a healthy, safe, and secure learning environment for our students. Um, we have several upgrades in the building recently. They noted the new boilers, the windows, the roof maker space in the turf field, um, which were all significant improvements in the building. But we also have plans, um, we're in the process of replacing a lot of furniture in the building. And we have plans to do so in the future. The video production studio is quite impressive if you have not seen that yet. And that's very exciting. Uh, we're talking about making plans to provide a new culinary space in the building. Um, we're doing, making improvements in the auditorium and the sound booth, which is just going to be incredible to have performances and productions, uh, when those things are in place. The curriculum, we met the standard as far as what we offer for course offers, offerings, AP, virtual, um, ingenuity courses, and, uh, appropriate after-school programs and academics and athletics and different, um, activities and clubs available to students. Um, technology, I've already mentioned that we meet the needs of our students. And then capital improvement plan, our classroom modernization plan. And even just this afternoon, I was talking with department chairs about projecting a five-year plan in which department like annually, we want to focus on as far as, um, our classroom modernization plan. So then this, that brings us to our priority areas and where we need to focus our work. So our priority area number one is obviously the, the development of vision of a graduate. So I met with a committee of, um, about twelve teachers last Wednesday, where, um, I've provided you the outline of, the timeline of our work for this year. So we did meet all of our objectives last Wednesday, where we defined the purpose of this, our committee. And we introduced the concept of the vision of a graduate. We kind of brainstormed, um, as Scott mentioned. When your student walks across, um, a graduation to get their diploma, what skills is it that we want them to have? Not only today, but in five years, what skills are they going to need in ten years, in fifteen years? Uh, we mentioned like the banners that hang in the auditorium, the vision, uh, sorry, the, our core mission values and beliefs and our twenty-first century learning skills. And, you know, ten years I was ago or more, I was part of the committee that developed those, um, that, that language. And kind of tried to drive home the importance of when we determine what our vision of a graduate is, like that's going to be lasting, like this is important work, this is meaningful work. And, um, we really want to be thorough and do a good job and inclusive of getting feedback, not only from the twelve of us, but from all of our faculty to really think about what skills our students are going to need, not today, but fifteen years from now. So, and then we determined like how we're going to roll this out to faculty. So we came up with just our general first impressions of some like five or six overlying skills we would like them to have, but with lots of language that goes underneath it. And then on November seventh, at our first faculty meeting, um, we have a plan of how we're going to roll this out to faculty and get feedback from everybody in kind of a similar format. Uh, but then on our next, in December, our half-day, the, um, the smaller committee that I worked with last week will take the feedback, our work from our first day, the feedback from the faculty, and we're going to develop a first draft. Present that proposal to faculty, get more input. And if all goes. And if all goes well, by March 8th, we plan to present a proposal for our finalize. So in March, hopefully, we will have our vision of a graduate in place. I, I feel like well before the end of the school year, because we have more work to do with that over the course of the two years. If need be, we can bring it back to the smaller group and then present it to faculty in May. So again, by the end of the year, we, our plan is to have a clearly defined vision of our graduate. Priority area number two, to expand the pathways program in P B L to provide inclusive and equitable opportunities for students. I just noted some things that we already have in place toward that. We, over the summer, we had a second group of teachers trained. There were about 15 teachers that completed the three-day training course in P B L. They're using the professional development time this year to design their projects and implement them in the classrooms. And over the summer, at the end of this year, then we could look for it to expand that even to include more faculty. And again, as our strand work, our half-days, our P D time over the course of this year is already dedicated toward that. Priority area number three is to provide more opportunities for teacher collaboration, both departmentally and across grade levels to foster diversity, equity and inclusion. So again, these priority areas were developed like last spring. But with, we already have steps in place that are working toward this. With our new schedule, more, more collaboration time is available for all teachers. And with the work that they're doing with their strand work and already knowing what they're doing for their professional development time, that kind of is already working toward meeting that priority area. So there's more we can do, but there are things that we already have in place to start addressing these things. And this priority area number four, to enhance students' academic and social emotional development by strengthening relationships between students and adults. We didn't have the wind block in place last year, but the wind block, the what I need, where students get to choose where they, what they want to do during that half-hour block. And we're finding most students are choosing their activity based on the teacher that's offering that activity. Like the kids want to be with who they want to be with, but that's part of the goal of it is for them to make connections with people. And particularly with staff in the building. We want to, we had a very involved, very effective P B I S team. The Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports was very active prior to COVID and it kind of died down a little bit. But would like to reinstate that this year and get that active again in the building. And then we need to establish a handbook revision committee to kind of make our handbook more aligned with what students need. And then the last one is priori- priority area number five, to update current grading policies to align with the school's beliefs about learning. And I know we've talked before about that too, that we need to establish a grading committee. So that's already in the works. And then the end of the report just included a list of commendations in the school and some things, you know, that they feel are our strengths. The first one was positive student-teacher relationships, pathways program, the consistent unit guide formats across departments, the variety of school programs and supports for students. So a lot of these I've already mentioned, the safe and secure learning environment, emergency protocols, technology, academic programs to meet student needs, our capital improvement plan and scheduled collaboration times. So all of these I've highlighted as I've talked through what the five standards are. But we're, we're excited about the report. I know we didn't meet our standards in two of the areas, but I know we have a plan and we're going to make our mark. And I think that the staff feels good about it. I think we're excited about our work over the next two years and we're definitely already moving in that direction.
Well, that is great. Thank you very much for giving us such an in-depth insight into all of that information. It's really great to hear and I'm glad that everyone's excited and ready to bring this forward. So thank you very much for putting together a very, I think, aggressive schedule, which, which is, which is great to see, so.
So at the end of the two years, do they come back in to reevaluate? Or do we like, are we on like a, like a process improvement plan, if you will, like how does that?
They come back in and they reevaluate. They're going to make sure that we've met our, their recommendations into the five priority areas.
So that, and that's actually considered your 10-year visit. So the collaborative conference is not considered the official 10-year visit. So you get re-accredited every 10 years. So they'll come back, they'll evaluate the five priority areas, they'll do a report, they'll actually really focus mostly on those five priority areas. They'll, they'll reevaluate again whether we've met the standards and then they'll make a recommendation for accreditation.
So we haven't lost our credit, we're still?
No, 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 so, so the recommendation for accreditation comes after this process. And every, every school district gets priority areas for our growth. So that's part of the collaborative conference. So they come out two years prior, look at your self-assessment. I don't know of a district that's had their self-assessment and they just said, everything's great.
They give you something to work to.
And, and then they establish those priority areas for growth and then they come back and reassess. And then, so really, we'll get our accreditation status after, and after the visit in the spring of 2024.
Okay, perfect, thanks for explaining that. And I mean, overall, it seemed very mostly positive. I mean, that was, I think, considering we did pretty well. There's a lot of great things then. Really just one thing, but it sounds like you've given a great plan in place, so good job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here.
I was gonna say, that didn't seem bad at all.
No. Yeah, there's not like, there is always room for improvement with N E S. At least in my personal experience.
I feel like in any type of evaluation process, they never say like, oh, you're perfect, because then you're just going to be like, ah. They want.
Yeah, and the whole, the whole N E S process is about continued growth. And obviously, the, the shifting from the core values and beliefs to the vision of the graduate is a major change in how they're approaching it. You know, conceptually, in some ways, it's the same, but it's, but it's different. They feel like that's a clearer, they feel like establishing a vision of the graduate is a clearer, cleaner thing for people to hold on to. Whether it's members of the community or kids or students or faculty versus a core of statement of core values and beliefs. And so, you know, obviously, that's a shift that we haven't yet made, but we're going to make during this process. And, and that'll be all by the end of this year, we should have that statement. We'll come back and, once that's established, we'll come back and have a discussion about that or a presentation on, on the vision of a graduate.
Excellent, and I'm, I'm sure there'll be some branding surrounding that, right? I'm sure, I'm sure Gina's wheels are already spinning.
We have four Carver graduates up here, so.
All right, ready? Walking running path, this is very, this is, I don't even know if this is really a presentation. And, and we already, the kids already hit on it. The student.
Yeah, which was great, I know.
There you go, they really, they really did hit on it.
That counts, right?
So, so I think most of you are aware that they've carved the path out. And I, I just wanted to take a minute to talk about it, because obviously, this is something we've really actually been discussing since the school was built. So as part of, you know, when the elementary school was built, the walking, running path that was there was in essence destroyed, partially destroyed, taken off the space that the walking path was on is where the building went. And so we actually, through that process, we, we looked at doing an add-on to the project of adding this walking, running path in. And we had some engineers actually design it for us. I don't know if people remember this, Stephanie may remember this. And at the time, they were estimating that the add-on cost would be close to $100,000. And if we were going to bring this into the project, it was, it was actually a group called Halveston. They were the landscape architects. And they designed the path and said, if this is how you want to make it, and this is what it's going to look like, this is, this is going to be your cost to add this on to the project. And at that time, the, the building committee wasn't interested in bringing that to the public. You know, the goal, one of the goals of the pro- the project was to, you know, lower costs or keep costs in control. I shouldn't say lower costs. It was to keep costs under control so that the community as a whole would support this project. And obviously, we had overwhelming support for the project and we built the building and all those things were exciting. But since that time, we've been trying to look at different ways to get this done. And as we really looked at it and we said, you know, ultimately, we got to start doing some fundraising to get this project done. But then we've actually had a lot of community donations. And when it's done, I'm going to bring in all the groups that have participated in this and recognize them. And we're hoping that we're going to be, that the project will be completed by the end of this month, if not the beginning of November. So just, and as you could, I don't know, these pictures don't really necessarily do it justice, but the path really outlines the fields at the elementary school. And I believe the full, the full track around is a little under a half-mile.
Okay, oh, cool, that's great, that's great.
So that was kind of, that was kind of the goal. So, and when, since it's something we've been talking about for, I feel like for many years. And because we've been getting some community donations, that's been understandable is that, you know, these, these companies that have been donating their time to do the work, so you know, they have to reprioritize sometimes. So I just feel like it's something we've talked about for a couple of years, but now it's coming to fruition, it's really happening. So I wanted to give the community, the community that update, give the community that update. As I said, when the path's completed, we'll bring in the groups that have been responsible for building the walking, running path for recognition, we're going to do some signage for them. Actually, we've been talking to the middle high school M E T program to do the signage. And they have some ideas about designing signs to, just to do some signage along the whole path, actually. But also specifically to recognize those community groups that have donated to the project. So more information will come on the walking, running path. Hopefully, we'll have another presentation in November or when the path is completed. And maybe more of a recognition at the beginning of the meeting of the groups that have been involved.
Great, awesome. That is excellent, very excited, can't wait. Is there going to be like a grand opening ceremony? Have you guys talked about doing?
We, we, I, we haven't talked about that yet, but I think that's a great idea, as long as it's ready to go.
Ribbon cutting ceremony, yeah.
On Tuesday, next Tuesday morning, no, actually tomorrow morning, we're going to have our groundbreaking with the walking, running club, because they're going to walk next to the path. I'm only joking, I don't know exactly where they're going to walk. I'm sure actually Renee is going to keep some, a little bit away from there.
The email I received, because Julian's triggered on Thursdays, that they're going to be running on the field until the path is completed. And if it's too wet or rainy, they'll run inside.
They, there are days where they go inside, so if it's.
They used to cancel it, so.
If it's really cold, if you go over there at 7:30 in the morning, you'll see the kids walking or running around the school.
Yeah, we got the pack of second pair of shoes, because the grass is often wet early in the morning.
We have upcoming events, which is just a list of a lot of activities coming up. You know, it's obviously in the school committees. In your background, so you can see the events that are coming up. I'm not going to go through and read everything.
Borndale's happening right now.
Borndale's happening as we speak for the sixth graders.
Well, I'll be sleeping over there Thursday night.
And then it said the seventh grader, the seventh graders are going the second half of the week. We have parent-teachers conferences coming up, both at the middle high school and at the elementary school. I think I mentioned this last time, we have the upcoming football game on 21st, FY21 with the dance on the 22nd.
The S A Ts next week, is that happening in school? S A T exams for seniors next?
On the 12th, yes.
I love that they're doing that in school now.
That's a, yeah, that's a change, that's a COVID change that has kind of stuck. Because that was something they were absolutely against, actually. You know, so the college board, S A Ts had to be given on Saturdays. And that's, as you, as, for those of us who took our S A Ts, you probably remember that you had to go.
North.
Yeah, yeah, because, well, not every school offered them. Probably had to go, then they were not offered at every high school and you probably had to go someplace to take them.
My district had them. Because someone pulled a fire alarm in the middle of.
But I'm sure you had to do it on a Saturday.
Yeah.
It was still, it was still in North Quincy High.
That is a nice, that is a nice COVID change, that they actually do it during the school day. Same with the P S A Ts. Boost-a-thon, Fun Run's coming up on October 14.
Yeah, exciting.
And, and there's a lot of events in November too. But we'll meet before, obviously, our next meeting is October 24th, so those will be, those will be coming up. I guess I do want to mention one event, though, is that on November 15th, we have secured Dr. Englander from the Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center, who is going to be doing an anti-bullying presentation. She's going to do it virtual, it's going to be, it's going to be a Zoom presentation at 6:30 on November 15. We actually had a little bit of a choice, we could have in person, but not Dr. Englander. So if we were going to have Dr. Englander, it had to be remote. So we went back and forth on that a little bit, but in the end, we decided that, you know, she really is considered the, the expert nationally. She's on national shows and she's often called upon in terms of talking about the issues around bullying. The other thing that I've always been impressed with her, because we have had her speak here a couple of times. And I know Christine and the middle school guidance office has done a lot of work with Dr. Englander, is that she really stays current. So she's not, she's not going to give the same presentation she gave eight years ago. You know, she's going to talk about the impacts of COVID. She's going to talk about the new impacts of social media, though social media was there eight years ago or 10 years ago, as she's done, as she had done presentations here. You know, but one of the things she specifically asked us was, what do you want your focus areas to be? Here's what I'm focusing on now, here's my, how my presentation's changed a little bit, which really was in line with some of the things we were looking for, which was phones, social media, effects of COVID. You know, so that's kind of where she's focusing her presentation now. But I think that's a great thing that she does, is that she always adapts and changes to what's happening currently on the ground.
And honestly, I think having it virtual, we have a better chance of having more participation, because like, you know, I think that's a Tuesday, because we have a meeting the night before, like, Tuesday nights, I'm sitting in the dance parking lot, but I can join Zoom from my phone, you know?
And I thought, I think we may, we will get better presentation then.
Are you going to require sign-ups or are you just going to share the link?
We're just going to share the link, there's not, she did not set a max. So maybe that's a good question for us to follow up with her, though. If she has a max on her Zoom. But I'm sure she has a thousand-person Zoom account. I could be wrong about that, but that would be my guess, is that she has a thousand.
It'd be cool if we had some social media posts about that too, because.
We will have some information of that.
I will happily share that one.
Yeah, I remember the last time that I, I saw her speak, she was telling everyone in the audience to not fight cell phones and to embrace them, because they were the wave of the future for our children, whether we wanted them to be or not. And that we needed to educate ourselves so we could, you know, guide them and educate them. It was, was very impactful. So I'm, I'm excited that she's, that she's going to be available again, so thank you for making that happen.
Now I'm looking forward to that.
All right, I think that's all I have, if it's okay, I'll move into the recommendations.
Okay, absolutely.
So first is just two field trips, one for the grades, grade seven to Canterbury Lake and one for the band for UMass Band Day. Your choice, if you want to take these separately or together, you can make a motion to approve these together or separately, as you choose.
I will happily make a motion to approve both the Canterbury Lake trip for, for the grade seven and make a motion to approve the middle high school band field trip for UMass Band Day.
My second.
Excellent, we have a motion in the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you to those that are, are leading these opportunities for our students to get together and have some fun.
I really want to chaperone that Canterbury Lake trip, because I scream fest right now.
And I, I am actually going with the juniors to Salem on Friday.
Are you guys going to Canterbury after that too?
Yes. So, sorry, sorry. I'm not, and I'm not, I'm not looking to, I'm not looking, I'm not looking forward to scream fest like you would necessarily be looking forward to it.
This is going to be happening in my own yard very soon.
Budget, budget transfers.
Transfers.
So, you know, Ron, Ron is not here, is unable to make it tonight, but I does have some budget transfers for the beginning of the school year for FY23. They are all in front of you, the transfers he's looking to make, I just put them up on the screen. You know, the biggest number on there is the 61,915. Carver has two accounts used to budget for collaborative out of district placements, out of district costs. One is for the middle high school, one's for the elementary school. This is simply a transfer from the middle high school collaborative outside, out of district costs to the elementary one, based on actual enrollments. What the committee should know is actually our overall enrollment out of district is actually down a little bit and we're trending in a positive direction on the budget overall. So that's good news right now. Obviously, that, that is something that always could change, you know, so based on what happens throughout the. You know, so based on what happens throughout the year, we could have a change in our district placements that would, um, have us not trend in a positive way. Uh, but currently we are. So that, you know, that, that is a fairly large transfer. So I wanted to point that one out specifically. Uh, but ultimately that's just, uh, moving with the line items, uh, all out of district costs and that the overall cost is pretty neutral. The rest are pretty small items. Uh, you can see the list. If you want me to talk about any of the specific items on the list, I'll do my best to do so. Uh, otherwise I would recommend that we make, uh, a motion to approve, uh, the transfers as presented to you this evening.
I'll make a motion to, um, I move to approve the budget transfers as presented this evening.
I'll second.
Excellent. We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much for presenting those instead. Um, okay, so that brings us to reports from the school committee and it's eight eleven. I think that's the, I, not that we keep track, but gotta say.
Nice, nice meeting.
This is, this is pretty quick.
So leading off their goals.
Right? So this is something that, um, I'm very excited about and I'm very proud of us for, um, working towards achieving. I mean, I, I feel like we've done so many things this year that, um, we weren't able to accomplish over the past few years due to all of the time and energy that everyone's spent focusing on the pandemic. So I'm very thankful to be able to move forward, um, and really set some positive goals for the school committee to achieve. So I'm not sure if, if anyone wants to discuss our goals. Um, I'm sure these will be posted on our webpage, right? If anyone in the community would like to view them, see what they're about, send us any emails, ask us any questions. It's really establishing these goals so we can support the district's educational blueprint. So that we can make sure that we're fulfilling our roles and being as supportive as we can of the district for the benefit of our students, our teachers, our staff, administration for transportation, for, um, food services, everyone. So does anyone have anything they would like to discuss or mention? Um, I know that we've already worked on accomplishing some of these things, which is great, working towards them. And I just want to say thank you to everyone for your input. I'm very excited for all the things that are to come. So I guess with that, we should, uh, make a motion to approve our goals.
I'll make a motion to approve the school committee goals as presenting.
Second.
Excellent. We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Again, thank you everyone very much. Okay, so if anyone else has any other type of report that they would like to give, now is the time.
I just want to say thank you to our student ambassadors, cause that presentation was excellent tonight. Um, very informative and, and very humorous. Um, you know, I'm out in the community quite a bit these days with my own child. And the, the, the word on the street is that things have been moving towards a much more positive atmosphere and environment in school. Everybody's kind of, you know, moving past covert, COVID. It's been great to see all of the, uh, activities, the events. Everybody in general just seems a lot more positive about where we're heading as a district. And I'm very thankful for everybody who has, um, made that happen and has worked towards those goals for this year. So I, I wholly appreciate it. And one of the things, it's, it's kind of a personal thing, but it's not a personal thing too, because our Carver youth cheer program is working with our Carver high school cheerleaders and putting on a showcase next week, um, at Carver high school gym at, um, six PM. And we would love anybody to come and attend and, and cheer our athletes on. Um, I've definitely been enjoying the youth programs that have been intermingling with our high school programs. I think it's, it's great for the, the younger kids. I think it's great for the older kids to get involved and, and help out. And I, I'm definitely very happy to see that.
What night is that, Kelly?
It is Tuesday night, October eleventh at six PM in the high school gym. And all, all the teams will be performing. So all the youth and the Carver high cheerleaders will all be performing together. So.
Is that a free event?
It's a free event. Come on in. Yeah, we're, we're spreading the word. We've been posting it everywhere. So we're hoping we're, we're gonna get some. And I do believe our youth football teams will be there as well, who are doing very well in a brand new division this year. It's, it's, it's been, um, tougher, we'll just say, but they're holding their own and they're doing a great job. And I hear that our soccer program's doing really good this year too. So, um, glad to hear it, glad to hear it. And thank you to everybody who's making that happen. All the volunteers, all the teachers, the staff, everybody.
Takes a village.
It takes a village, absolutely.
Anyone else?
I'm happy for a very positive meeting. I'm happy for all of the awesome celebrations. Um, you know, from Shana's very high scores to, you know, student representatives being here, both, you know, the elementary and then the middle high school, um, students that are, you know, coming out to wannabe participating. It's great. Um, you know, my, my heart is a little heavy tonight, cause, uh, there's a family in town that is, um, going through the unimaginable. And, um, a girl that I've attended high, uh, school with since elementary is uh, in her last days. I think most people know about this person and, and her very courageous fight, um, with cancer. One of her children is in, is a student in our district right now. And, uh, on her Facebook, there's a page that's been following her journey and just countless people are, um, just leaving messages about the life that she has led and the impact and legacy she has led. And so, um, for those who don't know Jody McClellan LaFountain, her mantra is love like crazy and to live like Jody. And so, while it doesn't really relate directly to school, I just, I hope that everybody will be inspired to surround this family with love, um, and especially her children. And, um, as you go about your day tomorrow, this week, love like crazy. So Jody, we're thinking of you. And Brian and Chase and Addison and Pearl. That's it. That's all I got.
I just would like to say that I, um, am very excited to start working with the student advisory committee. As I think everyone knows, I work with elementary kids. So it will be really exciting to see an education perspective from the high school kids and to actually get to help and guide them as they make this commitment to the school committee with us.
It's so exciting.
Right, I'm so, stepped up. I'm excited.
The, the amount, the res, the response has been overwhelming, right?
No, it's gonna be great.
Yeah, and there are so many opportunities for them beyond our district also. Participate statewide, nationwide. It's, um, they can really take it as far as they want to go, which is great. Colleen, are you all set?
Yes, thank you. I, I second, um, you know, the extent of applicants we got and, um, I'm just looking forward to working, um, with them. So connect to the older community, middle high school community.
Great, thank you. Um, I am very thankful that we have so many people in our district who are present and who are aware, um, and who are connected to truly making our district, um, a welcoming, a save, a supportive place for everyone to be. Um, it's not an easy undertaking. Um, cause as we know, every, every family has, um, issues that they face on a daily basis that people may not know about. Some are public, some aren't. Um, and I'm just very grateful that, um, the focus has been save supporting schools. And I have heard wonderful things about the win hour. Um, and it's really great to see the students get excited and to see and hear the teachers get excited about, you know, the opportunity for them to connect with students they might not have met, had it not been for the, for the win block. So, um, I'm very thankful that that has, um, come to fruition this year. Um, I look forward to maybe later in the year, hearing about how some things have developed and maybe some, you know, some expanded opportunities as the year progresses. Um, but I just want to say thank you to everyone that worked so hard to, um, work towards, you know, really making our district the best place that it can be. Um, so I'm just, I'm very grateful and thankful. So, um, everyone stay safe out there as best you can and be kind, be safe. And um, I wish everyone, I know the end of the week, um, a long weekend. I hope everyone can get outside and, um, take some time with family to enjoy, um, Indigenous Peoples' Day weekend. And, um, it's October, which is just unbelievable that we are in October already. Um, but it's great to see the calendars filling up and the, and the sports fields bustling and the kids are practicing for drama and band concerts and all these types of things. So it's really just great. It's great to see. So I'm just very grateful to everyone. So with that, I would, unless everyone has anything to add, anyone would like to make a motion to adjourn?
I would say you hit it, Steph. Carver is a very special community. Like sometimes we forget how lucky we are.
We are very lucky. I'm very, I'm very, very thankful.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
And good night.